About 11 years ago. That came on long before my watch. I've only been here three years, but we've strongly supported it over this last few years. Needle exchange, while controversial, is very clear from a public health standpoint. It stops the spread of HIV in a population that uses injection drugs or otherwise injects legal medicines, such as people with diabetes who might use injections. Clean needles. We've pulled 1.4 million dirty needles off the streets of Los Angeles in this past year. So putting clean needles out there isn't encouraging drug use, it's getting dirty needles off the street. While people again think it's controversial, I don't believe that anyone who wasn't injecting drugs would start injecting because they had the opportunity to have a clean needle. I think that argument, quite frankly, is preposterous. We encourage our providers and actually mandate our providers to take action to get their clients into drug treatment, to get them into medical care, to get them into social services, so they stop using drugs. So they clean up their lives, quite frankly. We think this is a great public health intervention and great social service. So the City of LA has been at the forefront of that. LA County Health Department is just now rolling out their contracts to create a similar program that wraps around our program. Apart from that, we have pushed legislation for several years. Every year, my office puts out a legislative agenda at the federal and state level we need to be supporting, and I think the City of Los Angeles should be at the forefront of the push for better public policy. And our other claim to fame is that many, many years ago, under City Attorney James Hahn, Los Angeles created the world's first AIDS antidiscrimination law. It's really a great claim to fame because we said you cannot discriminate against people in employment and housing because they're HIV positive, and quite frankly, much of the rest of the world has followed our example.
Well, I think probably the biggest headline from everything you've had to say is education is crucial. How, if somebody would like to get some of the information that you've been talking about, or get in touch with your office, how would they go about doing that?
Certainly. They can give us a call at (213) 485-6320. Or more importantly, I hope people can get to my website. It's www.lacityaids.org. On that website, they're going to see a banner that demonstrates our latest HIV testing initiative. The real bottom line and most important item right now we have to fight the epidemic is to educate people, but make sure people know their HIV status. If you don't know your status, you're more likely to be out there spreading the virus. We plan on launching, over the next six months, a three-year pilot program to test up to a million people in Los Angeles. Currently, we test about 60,000 people across the county in public and private medical care. That number needs to grow up dramatically. You'll see our rationale for wanting to do that kind of testing on the website. You'll see our social marketing campaign. Again, we target communities that need to be thinking about this strongly in their communities. We say HIV is a black disease. The African-American community is most disproportionately impacted. They need to take action to address that. We say HIV is a Latino disease. Those billboards are up in the city. The Latino community is going to have the largest numbers of people who are HIV positive over the next couple of years. We also say HIV is an Asian disease. Asian community has very small numbers right now in terms of who's impacted, but those numbers are growing and the community is not talking about it and addressing it enough. We also say HIV is a women's disease. Women made up 5% of the epidemic a decade ago, now make up 13% here in Los Angeles. It's more than 150% increase. We have to do something about it. So the City of Los Angeles plans on taking a leadership role, and hey, we're doing it.
Well said. Stephen, David, Simon, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you for having me.
The Los Angeles City Council voted unanimously to support legislation for research and development of microbicides to be used for HIV/AIDS prevention. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the City of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meeting and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at[268.08][268.08](213) 473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the weekend in February 23, 2007. On behalf of Roberto Campos and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Pope-Joy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Ethel Bradley is this year's Dream of Los Angeles Award Honoree. Our honoree was the First Lady of the City of Los Angeles for 20 years. Her husband, Mayor Tom Bradley, inspired the nation when he was elected the 38th Mayor of LA in 1973, becoming the first African-American to lead a large urban city for a span of two full decades. Mayor Tom Bradley was one of the most beloved mayors in contemporary American society. Both Tom and Ethel Bradley always believed that this city's rich and diverse cultural heritage was its greatest asset. With their passion for the city and their insight into its potential, under Bradley's leadership, Los Angeles became one of the world's preeminent international cities. Ethel Bradley became an Angelina at the age of 12, when she and her family moved to Los Angeles. It was only a short time later that she met her future husband at the New Hope Baptist Church. She became Mrs. Tom Bradley on May 4, 1941, and together, they raised their two daughters, Lorraine and Phyllis. Ethel Bradley, in her role as First Lady, had the privilege and honor of hosting many distinguished guests of the city. Mrs. Bradley has served the City of Los Angeles with grace and wisdom for over 30 years. She will forever be affectionately remembered for her diplomatic demeanor and her civic and humanitarian endeavors. Ethel Bradley, this year's Dream of Los Angeles Honoree.
experiment to me denotes that there will be successes or failures. And I don't believe it's an experiment. I believe it's a movement, and that we will never go back to the way we used to do business in the City of Los Angeles. Whether it was a planning issue or an ordinance that was passed, we had a lot of complaints from people in the City of Los Angeles. The decisions were made in downtown Los Angeles, but the very people that were impacted by those decisions weren't consulted, or weren't given an opportunity to weigh in on those decisions before they were made. So the creation of neighborhood councils at the basic was that we would give people a voice, and that neighborhood councils would be that vehicle for that voice. To tell lawmakers before we made our decisions how you felt about what we were about to do, and neighborhood councils can issue a community impact statement that actually shows up on our written agendas. And before, when we would vote on an item on the city council, it would have written on there what the fiscal impact was, so that we would know when we voted on something how that impacted the general fund, or if it didn't affect the general fund. But now, communities through neighborhood councils can actually have their opinion, their statement printed right on our agenda, on that very item. So we know whether you're in the Valley, or East Los Angeles, or West Los Angeles, or the Harbor area, we know how you would like to see us vote. So it's a very sobering, I know it is for me, to see those community impact statements written on our agenda. So no longer can we use the excuse, "Well, we didn't hear from that community," or "We don't know how they think, so we'll vote anyway." Now neighborhood councils have a way to give a very loud voice to the decision makers that make the decisions that impact residents in Los Angeles. So one of the things I have asked our Board of Neighborhood Commissioners to do is to honor the neighborhood councils who have celebrated five years in existence. And that is no small, you know, benchmark or milestone. Neighborhood councils really, didn't really know how to behave. We didn't have a lot of rules governing neighborhood councils, although we've made them as we've gone along. We've made rules, and some of them have been popular, and some of them have not been popular. But I think for a neighborhood council to have survived five years in this beginning process of empowering people is really something to be celebrated, it is something to be honored. And it's also a time, I believe, to listen to those neighborhood councils who have really been out there in the trenches, have tried to navigate elections, have tried to navigate outreach, have tried to navigate spending of the $50,000 annually. It's an opportunity for the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners to listen to those neighborhood councils and learn from them. What were some of the pitfalls? What were some of the obstacles? What were some of the hurdles? What's causing people to not want to be a part of a neighborhood council anymore? What's still the obstacle for attracting more people to the neighborhood councils? And more importantly, listening to the highlights of their five years as a neighborhood council. What have they done that's important? What have they done that's interesting? What have they done to change their neighborhood for good? And so today, what I wanted to take this opportunity to do is to honor and celebrate the neighborhood councils that have survived for five years. And again, we had the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, the Coastal Neighborhood Council, Central Neighborhood Council, Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council. Also, I don't believe they're here today, but we're also honoring West Hills, Glessel Park, West Adams, and Mid-City Neighborhood Councils. All those neighborhood councils are celebrating five years, and I think that's something, not only for the neighborhood councils to celebrate, but I think something, Dennis, that we in the City of Los Angeles can celebrate, and those of us who thought about this many, many years ago can celebrate, because people thought we were crazy, people thought it would stop development, people thought it would wreck havoc, and in fact, it hasn't done any of those things. I think it has gone a long way towards improving relationships between the decision makers and those that we serve and, and those that we, with whom we govern. But it's also improved neighborhoods, I think, for the better. And I was gonna have Pat Herrera Duran just say a few words before we honor the neighborhood councils that are here. Pat was there from the very beginning. Pat was one of the first commissioners on the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. She was there during the charter reform process. So she's really been there, she's seen it all, she's heard it all, and I thought you might want to make a few comments too, as we celebrate some five-year anniversaries of this incredible movement in the City of Los Angeles called Neighborhood Councils. Pat Herrera Duran.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you so much for inviting me to be here on this particular day. You don't know how wonderful it feels to be here to honor those neighborhood councils, and I remember that night so well. I remember everything that happened. I remember the little celebration that we had that this was the first one. And I remember that all through these years Wilmington Neighborhood Council was the first, and as Janice said, a few minutes later, the Coastal Neighborhood Council was the second. And there's always been that little tension between the two of them. Oh, they do. They like each other, and they work with each other, and that's what the important thing is. I want to thank everybody for being here today, to honor all of those that we're going to honor today, and I want to thank also the City of Los Angeles for providing the opportunity to have the Neighborhood Council system. That is important. Whatever the ups and downs we've had, whatever disagreements or whatever we have wanted to change or not change, whatever we had on the commission, I was on it for several years, I would do it all over again in a hot second, as long as we could have a day like this. So thank you very much, and congratulations to all of those, even those who are not here today, who have come through this very, very important time in our history.
Thank you. What I, how I want to honor these neighborhood councils is to have the presidents of the neighborhood councils come up. We have resolutions honoring them and celebrating their, their fifth year anniversary, but I would like to have each of the presidents just briefly maybe touch on some of those highlights of their particular neighborhood council, what they can look back on in five years as seeing what were some of the really important things that the neighborhood councils were involved in. So the first neighborhood council, the very first, even though they were moments apart, we will never, ever be able to take away from this neighborhood council that they were the first neighborhood council to be certified in the City of Los Angeles, the Wilmington Neighborhood Council and President Jack Babbitt. Okay, why don't you, Jack, say a few words briefly?
Thank you very-
I don't have as much time as you want. It's your anniversary.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm always pretty brief. Thank you very much for this honor. I think the most important thing that our neighborhood council has done is come together as a group. I know there's several of our members that are here today, and without them, we truly wouldn't be what we are, so I'd ask those that are in the audience to please stand up, all the Wilmington Neighborhood Council members that are here. That is our biggest strength. We're very diverse. We cover the entire community from the different caucus groups that we have, and without them, it wouldn't have happened. And that's our greatest strength, is our people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Ms. Han?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Labange wanted to say something.
When you were certified, and I remember, I said it, I want to say it again, that when I was on a train in 1978 coming into Delaware, Wilmington, Delaware, the conductor said Wilmington, Delaware, the first city of the first state of the Union, the United States, and now here, so many years later, Wilmington's the first community in our very good outreach with our program for neighborhood councils. So I want to put that historic perspective together. Thank you.
And you know, I want to take a moment to, just to give a shout out to Tony O'Donnell, who was the very first president of the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, and going through some tough health issues, so our prayers are with you, Tony, today, and we'll never forget that you stepped up to the plate to be the first president of the first neighborhood council, so we're wishing you well, Tony. Okay, the second neighborhood council to be certified moments later, kind of like twins, one, but one came out first. But I'd like to honor and recognize the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council and President Doug Upperhart. Would you like to say a few words?
He has a speech. I do, I do. Rather than giving you the laundry list of accomplishments, although I will mention a couple of firsts, since that's the theme today. The first project of any neighborhood council in the City of Los Angeles was when Coastal San Pedro got money from our former mayor, the other Han, to provide new playground equipment at 15th Street Elementary School. That was the first one, and we've worked with schools ever since. I think we probably, accomplishments have the best outreach in the City of Los Angeles. We've got a great newsletter, The Coastal Currents, which is produced by our treasurer here, who is also our outreach chair and taking pictures. The best thing, though, five years, people. Jack talked about that, but it is true. Our board over the last five years has been served by 47 individuals who have been board members. We've got dozens of volunteers. I would point out that we're probably the only neighborhood council who has had a, a former city council member on its board, Bob Farrell, who is here today. And I have to attribute a lot of our success over the years to the good advice of Bob Farrell, who is still working with us. The other day I did a quick calculation, and I figure that between our board members and really active volunteers, Coastal San Pedro probably produces over 6,000 hours a year in terms of volunteerism. That's what it means. Multiply that by the 80-plus councils in the City of LA, and you have an idea of how much volunteer effort goes into this. Some of our coastal residents over the years, and now have included Councilwoman Janice Han, the first president of Wilmington, Tony O'Donnell, former commissioner Pat Herrera Duran, current Board of Neighborhood Council's Commissioner Diane Middleton, and I want everybody to remember that Reggie the Alligator started out in coastal. Okay? He actually lived up the street from my mother-in-law. There's a joke there, but I'm not telling it. Okay. We also finally have the only military housing in the City of Los Angeles. About 10% of the population of Coastal San Pedro are Air Force officers, non-commissioned officers enlisted and their dependents, about 2,500 people or so, and most of them are assigned to LA Air Force Base. And one thing I'd like to do is to invite you all back down here to San Pedro via Wilmington. March 13th at the Warner Grand Theater, the United States Air Force Academy Band is performing. And if you see Bob, we'll get tickets for all of you. This is, this venue is actually in the Central Neighborhood Council area at the Warner Grand Theater, which is a wonderful facility we've supported. Thank you again. It's been a great five years.
These guys are tough, too. When I moved to my new home, which was in the new boundaries of coastal, I went to vote in the very first election, and I hadn't had any of my identification changed with my new address, and they were not gonna let me vote, because I did not, couldn't prove that I lived in that area. So they're, they're tough. And the final one today, very pleased to honor the Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council, President Diana Nave, and I, I know she's gonna talk about a lot of accomplishments, but I did want to highlight council members. We just talked about last week the Propo funding that would be coming to the Harbor area, and this was a very unique partnership with this neighborhood council, who really helped apply for the funding to go towards Peck Park Canyon, and I think they will be very pleased, because everything they laid out for what they wanted to improve the canyon and the waters was approved. So this was a great opportunity of a neighborhood council being able to snag $6 million of Propo funding to improve a local park. So I hope I don't take all your speech. Okay, it's just such, I just really wanted them to know that. So Diana Nave, the president, congratulations. Let me get your picture.
Thank you. It's exciting to be here today as a part of this birthday celebration. Our neighborhood councils come a long way since we first gathered together as a formation committee to try to figure out what this participatory democracy, grassroots democracy would be all about. And so I'm delighted to be here today to tell you a little bit about our accomplishments. I'm gonna cut it down, though, based on my predecessors. First thing I wanted to talk about was Peck Park, because that's something that five years ago was the vision of one man, Ray Patricio, right here, and today, not only is there the $6 million in Propo funds that will clean up the water before it enters our port, but there's an additional $2 million that has come into the city from five separate funding sources to restore the trails and make this a very unique experience for us. Working with the city council office and a lot of other organizations, we've accomplished a lot in our five years. We submitted a proposal to the Port of Los Angeles that's resulted in about $5.2 million to beautify a strip of vacant land in our community. We've learned a new language, and we've viewed and provided comments on environmental documents, notices of preparation, mitigated negative declarations, EIRs, for both new construction in our community and in the port. We've testified before the zoning commissioner, the planning commissioner, and worked with the developers to modify the projects to the benefit of our community. I could talk on and on about the things that we have done in, in the area of planning. We've also assisted numerous stakeholders on specific issues to resolve them. But there's a lot of other issues that are still on our horizon. We've conducted a survey of our stakeholders, got over 800 responses. The number one issue? Traffic. So we look forward to continuing to work with the city on traffic policy. We think that's a very important issue, and we're committed to working on that with you. One other thing I've suggested to the 9/12 Commission, and I will suggest it to this council, and it kind of goes right along with that. When we were in England, we saw what was called a consultation process, and that is, the city council would put out an issue that they wanted input from the neighborhood councils on. Give us time to discuss it, maybe give us some suggestions about what you want feedback on. I think traffic is one of those issues. I think the gang problem might be another one of those issues, where a consultation project process might work well. So the five years has flown by. We've, we've accomplished a lot. One of our biggest accomplishments is bringing together a very diverse group of people who have come together and have worked together on issues that have accomplished a lot for our community. A lot of people have dedicated a lot of time and energy to make this happen, but we've only just begun. So our neighborhood councils bringing the community closer to the city government, we definitely think so. I've left for each of you a copy of our Neighborhood Council newsletter. Again, thank you for honoring us this morning.
And the final one, I understand the president got here, the president of Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council, Joe Gatlin, come on up. Please address the crowd on your neighborhood council.
Council members, thank you so much for, for this honor. Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council, we feel is the heart of San Pedro, and also what this has allowed us to be is a voice that we felt we didn't have. Right now, the largest concentration of development that's going on in our community is happening in Central. 2,300 units will be going downtown, opening this year in Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. The problems that concern that and concern the neighboring communities are vast, from traffic, from schooling, just how these, working with our labor to make sure that they're union labors. It's everything that touches, all of this goes through our council, and we're so proud of that. We also have a downtown district that we're very proud of, that we're doing everything we can to help revitalize that and be partners with. We also have the largest project, when I say project, a community of 850 homes of individuals who are- We felt, being on the southern end of San Pedro and having so many members of our community who felt they didn't have a voice, and now we're, have a voice, we can reach out and touch our councilwoman, or our former mayor, or anyone else, and tell them about our problems. We really appreciate it, and we wanna thank you for this award. Thank you.[615.54][615.54](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, and congratulations to all the neighborhood council. Being on the Education Neighborhood Committee, I am committed to making sure that the future of the neighborhood councils is strong, and they really will be empowered to be all that they were envisioned to be. If confirmed by us, we have a new general manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, Carol Baker Thorpe, and we look forward to working with her in improving and cutting bureaucratic red tapes, tape, for all of our neighborhood councils. So, congratulations to all of you.[656.62][656.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. So, thank you, Ms. Han, and thank you to all of you. There's a lot of firsts that happen here in Wilmington and San Pedro, and so we're glad to be here today. Colleagues, because we don't have a way and wish for you to push your button to vote or to speak, we will be doing that by, I think, voice vote or raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Also, to those of you that are here today, we do have agendas and public speaking cards at the back of the room. If you are interested in speaking before the city council today, we welcome your input, and you can provide that to our officers, and they will provide it here to us, the city council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weesar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present in the forum, Madam President.
First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
First item on the agenda, Madam President, is a special presentation, and there are cards on that item. Do you wish to hold that?
We will hold that on the desk.
Item number two is an item for which public hearing has been held. It's an ordinance, second reading.
Anyone wanna call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weesar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, sign.
11 eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items three through 19, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Would anyone like to call any of those items special? Yes, Mr. Parks.
Number five, because we have a clarifying motion gonna be circulated.
Okay, number five, we will call special. He will be introducing a clarifying motion. When we have that, we'll be able to consider that item. If no other specials, Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weesar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, sign.
11 eyes.
Those items have been approved.
Madam President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time, or go to item number one?
I think we'll take a public comment, and let me maybe ask Ms. Han. Ms. Han, we have public comment as well as cards on item one. Should we take public comment first, and then we'll go to item one? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to, as you see the podium, yes, Mr. Parks. I'll have item number 19 go forthwith. Have the following people, call your name and come to the podium. Lucy, sorry, Matelli? Mahia, sorry, that's a J, okay. We'll let you take a minute to get up there. I'll call the others just behind you. Then, it shall be followed by Arthur Hernandez, I think then Donald Compton, followed by Linda Spink, and then Noel Weiss. Welcome, Lucy. And just for the public, you'll know, you have two minutes. Can you get, thank you. Two minutes for each speaker.
Good morning. Could you hear me? Good morning, my name is Lucy Mahia. I wanna thank Janice Han, and the community wants to thank you, Janice Han, and the rest of you, for helping us. For helping us get the basketball court on the east side. I wanted to invite you to come in August, but you guys were on vacation, and you guys are the ones that helped us to get it in Wilmington. But you still could come when you ask Janice, and I'll come and show you our basketball court. And it's open seven days a week, and all the kids are having a good time, and I would love for you guys to come and throw some balls in the basketball court. So, please come and enjoy Wilmington, and thank you for not making the mistake again. This is Wilmington, not the forgotten city. Thank you.[907.32][907.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. I'll take anybody on one-on-one.
Oh, wow, that's a challenge.
I got a great outside shot.
Mr. Zine, are you ready?
I'd just like to say, my name is Arthur Hernandez. I'd like to wave my right, maybe switch with Don Compton, my associate, and let him go before me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for noticing, Ms. Perry.
Yes.
I just threw this together.
Right like this? Okay. Yes, I'm Chair of the Wilmington Neighborhood Council's Education Caucus. I'm a licensed schoolteacher for life, my parents were before. I've lived here all 65 of my years, and my duty on the Wilmington Neighborhood Council is to look after the welfare and safety of the schoolchildren, teachers, and administrators of our public and private schools here. In particular, Hawaiian Avenue and Banning Elementary and Dana Village, which feeds into those two elementary schools, are within a couple of blocks of Harry Bridges Boulevard. Dr. John Freund's UCLA PhD chemistry has spoken to the Port Commission on August 2nd, and he has warned that a diesel particulate matter here is unacceptable right now. When I talked to him the day before yesterday at noon and told him about the port plans for Harry Bridges, he says adamantly, there should be no development on either side of Harry Bridges for at least 100 yards, both sides. That includes the Sisakian Associates Master Plan. This is coming up to the Port Commission, and we will be there in the stead of these schoolchildren, and we are fighting any development down there until it's cleaned up. And about 10 years, Dr. Ralph Affey has told the group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hernandez.
Back again, my name is Arthur Hernandez, board member of the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, and I'd just like to say that through the mitigation of the promenade in Wilmington, the development of Harry Bridges Road, I wrote many plans, many memorandums, and the development of Harry Bridges Road at present is a diesel death zone. The Watson Yard is a diesel death zone, and it is true, we need development. And also, my concern in Wilmington is to see about development and getting rid of the bigness of Wilmington on Anaheim. That is one of my concerns. Along with that is development on Anaheim, the Watson Street, all the way down to U-Bank, to redevelop that whole area, and also give some support for the, a new development area on McFarland and Op. I understand that the Customs came in there and moved in, and there was hardly any mitigation for Customs that come in in that area. There was no input, and we would like to mitigate that, and it has been suggested that Customs should move into a more appropriate area, because this area was under consideration, recommendation for a new school, and it never happened. And we badly need a new school in that area to serve the community, and it's been in the planning for over a decade, but it just hasn't happened. We would like to see things in our community go forward, and that's why in our community we are working forward to, we're working to better, better improve our community and make it a better and safer place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Linda Spink.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Linda Spink, President of Los Angeles Harbor College, your local community college which supports the Harbor area, and I wanted to welcome all of you to our community. I wanted to extend the services of the college to the council in any way that we can help you, and I know I speak for our sister, eight other Los Angeles community colleges. All of you have been very supportive of many initiatives and things that we've been working with, and we certainly appreciate, excuse me, appreciate your support. I would like to point out, Coastal made a comment that Reggie started in their area. Reggie really is on Harbor College property, you know. We formally adopted him with Harbor City, and his footprints and body prints were found on our land, so, but Reggie obviously was in Harbor Regional Park and in the Machado Lake area, and we wanted to let you know how grateful we are that, because we are surrounded on three sides by the lake, and then by the 110. It's an interesting composition. But we are very appreciative of the work that's going to be done in Harbor Regional Park. We've had some real serious problems on campus from the park. We actually had some folks get West Nile virus, and just have had many, multiple mosquito problems. So, we're very pleased that that's moving forward, and we look forward to working with the councilwoman's office to get that taken care of. And again, we offer the services of Harbor College to you if you wanna meet on campus sometime. It better be during summer or Christmas break, or you won't have parking, but we certainly would welcome all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Spink. Mr. Labange, Dr. Spink? Dr. Spink, Mr. Labange would like to ask a question.
Can I just make a comment? I know, I don't know if you're gonna change your name from the Seahawks to the Gators, but Harbor, I'm a graduate of Los Angeles City College, and I think the relationship between community colleges is great. And I know Ms. Han always tells me how we got to make available the opportunity for young people of all ages to know about the employment in the City of Los Angeles. There's over 48,000 jobs. You offered the community colleges, and I know I have an idea to get Personnel Department in a tight relationship with our colleges, our community colleges, for good jobs, whether it's at the port, as Ms. Han always fights for, or whether it's in the DWP, because we're short on great people in that area. So, if I contact you, could we arrange a meeting uptown with our Personnel Director?
I'm sure we could work something out. All of us have job placement centers. All of us would be very happy to work with the city with that. We all do training programs, special to the needs of the companies in our area, so we'd absolutely be willing to work with you. I think many of the nine of us are also integrated with our local whiffs, and so that would be a very good marriage.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Han.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange, Mr. Weiss.
Council members, good morning. My name is Noel Weiss. First, Mr. Labange is leaving, but I wanted to reiterate, the Junior Olympics are coming at the end of July. It really would be great if we could have in each district a little track and field activity by district. But more importantly, I'm really here today because I wanted to kinda, to not criticize, but challenge the council a little bit more. Yesterday, as you know, there was a hearing on the tenant relocation provisions. The Planning Commission, back in December, advocated, after some serious study, 9,000 and 17,000, up from the current 3,400 and 8,000. That's for non-seniors, non-disabled, the lower amount, seniors, disabled, and families the higher amount. The problem is, and again, we're supposed to have an open system here, and it was a little distressing and disturbing, because Mr. Wesson came up with a proposal out of the blue. We had public comment at that committee, but none of us who appeared before the committee for public comment had an opportunity to see his proposal in advance. That's wrong, and the public who's watching this or who watches it and communicates it should know that I don't think that this is the way the city council should do business. I think we should do it openly, and I would want, hopefully, at some point in time, for the one or more members of the city council to speak up whether or not they're for or whether or not they're against. And if they don't like the numbers, then let them come up with alternative numbers, but we need a debate, not just simply a dog and pony show. And I'm hoping that going forward, in the future, this is supposed to be scheduled for council consideration. I've given out a list of some of the difficulties with Mr. Wesson's proposal, and hopefully, I've talked to developers, by the way, some of whom I actually have to sue in order to collect. But even those developers say the 9,000 and 17,000 is fair, it's appropriate, and I'm just hopeful that the city council here, we can do business in the open, we can do business right. Maybe Mr. Wesson will have another hearing, maybe a little bit more open. We're gonna try to reach out to developers and to apartment people, but bottom line is, I'm hoping that one or more of one of you will at least come out and say, I'm for 9,000, I'm for 17,000, and begin to demonstrate some leadership on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. We do have another public comment card. Patricia Benoit.
Good morning. I'd like to say welcome to Banning's Landing, from the Friends of Banning's Landing. I'm their director, and privileged and honored to be here. They're, of course, the community support nonprofit that helped push and get this building built. We're so happy to have you here. It'd be nice if you were here in the evening to see our arts classes, our folkloric, our poloniesian is very exciting, our guitar classes, piano classes. It's really exciting to see the kids come in here and expanding the art frame of mind. Thank you for coming down to the landing.[1511.26][1511.26](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. Seeing no other public comment cards, we will close our public comment period today, and we'd like to, I think, go to item number one. And Ms. Han, I'll recognize you for this as your item. We do have several public comment cards, so if you'd like to have a presentation first or a public comment, which would you?
I think it would be good to have the presentation first, and then the public would be able to comment on the presentation. But colleagues, when we were in San Pedro for our last city council meeting, we got a presentation from the port on the waterfront development on the San Pedro side. So, this will be a presentation on the Wilmington waterfront. And as you can see, just physically being here at Banning's Landing, this is really where the Port of Los Angeles began. This is where Phineas Banning, there's a statue out in the plaza out there you should look at afterwards, began to develop the Port of Los Angeles, which is now with Long Beach, of course, the fifth-largest port complex in the world. But just as San Pedrans have felt alienated from their waterfront, even more so, the residents of Wilmington have felt like they were, not only did they not benefit from the billion-dollar economic engine, but they had negative impacts to their community as a result of the port complex growing and growing over the years. Everything from container storage yards right in residential neighborhoods to pollution, to truck traffic. It's a community that really has certainly suffered some negative impacts, even though the world has benefited from this port complex. So, one of the ideas, more like demands, from this community was, you know what, we want a piece of our waterfront, just like San Pedro has, and there's no reason that we can't develop a recreational tourist attraction on the Wilmington side of this beautiful waterfront. So, what we're gonna hear today is a presentation on a beautiful waterfront development plan that frankly, the community of Wilmington, along with the neighborhood council, has really participated in the development of this plan and has come together with a consensus, which is very, very important, as we all know, moving forward in the City of Los Angeles, to have a community get behind, buy into something that we're planning to do. So, it's with great pleasure that I wanna introduce this presentation on the Wilmington waterfront.
And I think maybe, Ms. Han, you and I may need to move, because we're right in the middle of the presentation.
I wanna be right in the middle of this Wilmington waterfront.[1701.01][1701.01](APPLAUSE).
My name is Chris Brown. I'm the program manager for the port for the Wilmington Waterfront Development Program, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this morning about this program. We've been working on this with the community of Wilmington for a number of years, and we're actually very excited about this and glad to be able to talk to you about it. The slide, which, oh, good, you can see much better up there, shows the Port of Los Angeles, and the red area is the Los Angeles waterfront. The Wilmington waterfront portion of that is mostly along the northern portion here, centered in a 95-acre parcel, inverted L from Figueroa and the 110 freeway, all the way over to Avalon and down to this building at Banning's Landing. There's also a connection down John S. Gibson Boulevard to the Vincent Thomas Bridge, and a connection up to the Wilmington Marina's along Alameda. Let me start with a little bit of history on this project. Back in the 80s, the port conceived of the idea to expand our tray pack and terminal to the north by buying There's also a connection down John S. Gibson Boulevard to the Vincent Thomas Bridge, and a connection up to the Wilmington Marina's along Alameda. Let me start with a little bit of history on this project. Back in the '80s, the port conceived of the idea to expand our tray pack and terminal to the north by buying up property between Harry Bridges Boulevard and C Street. We would then realign Harry Bridges Boulevard up north, right below C Street, and put a 20-foot-high sound wall between those two roads. This would allow us to expand the container terminal by about 25 acres. In the 1990s, we began acquiring property in earnest for this project. These slides here show an aerial view of those properties. There were a lot of industrial uses that were in place there. You can also see that there was a residential neighborhood immediately north of C Street. Although we had gone ahead and done plans on this, we were ready to go to construction, the port held off because of some of what Ms. Hahn had talked about, with the community outcry over the port encroaching north into the area, putting a 20-foot-high sound wall there, and basically just getting closer where people were living. The port held a series of community meetings and came up with the concept of compromising a bit, and expanding the area between Harry Bridges Boulevard and C Street into a 70-foot berm, which would be landscaped on the community side and a retaining wall on the south side. About this time, the Port Community Advisory Committee, which is made up of representatives of community organizations in Wilmington and in San Pedro, was formed, and a special subcommittee, which became the Wilmington Waterfront Development Subcommittee, was put together to look specifically at this buffer, or this berm issue. The initial focus was on that berm. The port did then add another area for consideration for community development along Avalon Boulevard, known as the Avalon Corridor. A consultant was hired to work with both the port and the community on this topic, and the eventual result of that, after about eight months of working together on that, was this framework document, which, if you look in the area where we were talking about realigning Harry Bridges Boulevard, it actually involves a lot more property than was originally proposed. The framework document came up with the idea of not realigning Harry Bridges Boulevard, reconstructing the road in place where it is, widening it a bit, and leaving all of that property that had been acquired for a buffer between Harry Bridges Boulevard, between the port and the community. This framework plan was put forward by the Subcommittee. It was taken to the PCCAC, the full PCCAC which approved it. It was brought to the city council in 2004, which also approved it, and it was approved by our Board of Harbor Commissioners, and became the framework for what we're moving ahead with on the Wilmington Waterfront Development Subcommittee. To implement this program, the port has again taken it into the two component pieces it started with. The buffer area here, which is basically an expansion of what was once the wall, is now a heck of a lot more than that, remains a part of the Tray Pack Expansion EIR, although the Tray Pack is no longer expanding to the north. And since it was already defined as being a landscape open space buffer, we felt we were able to move directly into conceptual design with that project. The other portion, the other project, the Avalon Corridor project, was less well-defined. We knew that there was a desire for development in there, and more open space, and a community access to the waterfront, but we needed to do a master planning development with that. And it would also need its own environmental document as it moved forward. In the beginning of 2006, the port began in earnest with our public outreach and collaborative planning process. We moved forward with four goals on both of these projects, that we worked together with the Wilmington Waterfront Development Subcommittee to come up with. And they were public access to the waterfront, providing a buffer between port activities and the community, providing an infrastructure faring work for further development in this area and in the Wilmington community, and along those lines, to provide an anchor for the redevelopment of the south portion of Avalon Boulevard, which is a vibrant commercial corridor a mile north at Anaheim Street, and is essentially pretty dead by the time you get down to the port. Along these efforts, we started with a large community workshop on April 1st, held right in this room, where we had more than 125 community members come together to tell us what sort of things they would be looking for in the buffer area and in the Avalon Corridor area. We took those suggestions back, and we came up in July with another large community workshop, this time held at Will Hall, the Wilmington Recreation Center, just north of the buffer area on C Street. And we brought three alternatives for the buffer and three alternatives for the Avalon Corridor plan, and asked the community there to tell us what they thought of those alternatives, which one they preferred, and what elements of each one they wanted to include in the final go-around. With that information, we came back in October to present a single alternative for the buffer and for the Avalon Corridor. We presented those, they were much more fleshed out than the last ones, and asked the community again for feedback on that. These proposed concepts were very well-received, and we were basically told to go ahead and let's start building this. So in December, we came back for our fourth community meeting. We held that on, excuse me, Bayview Field, which is right in the area of the buffer. We had over 1,000 people from the community attend that meeting. We presented renderings of what it was going to look like. We had a full-scale model of both projects, and we, again, had heard overwhelming approval of this project and urging us to move forward with it. On the summer 5th, the Wilmington Waterfront Development Subcommittee took an official vote to support this project and asked it to move forward. That went on to the full Port Community Advisory Committee, and on January 16th, they also voted to recommend that this project move forward. Well, with the background in place, let me tell you a little bit about the details of these two projects. The Harry Bridges Boulevard buffer is about 30 acres of property between C Street and Harry Bridges, from Figueroa on the west side over to Lagoon Avenue on the east side. It features six acres of open green space in the middle. That's twice the area that's currently available at the temporary Bayview Field. South of that, it does feature a 16-foot-high earthen berm all along the south edge of the project. This is essentially the buffer feature of this project. This is what's going to provide a noise and visual barrier between the buffer itself and the activities going on that, and the community to the north from the Tray Pack Container Terminal and Harry Bridges Boulevard. Also in this project are a large plaza on the eastern end, suitable for events such as the annual Fiesta Corazon del Puerto, which is held in Wilmington, as well as other events. There are two restroom buildings, one near the center of the project, another on the eastern end. There are two water features. This one on the eastern end adjacent to the plaza is an interactive splash fountain, which is intended to have kids go splashing through it in the summer. The one on the western end is more of a gateway feature for people coming into the Wilmington neighborhood area. And there is a playground in the center of the area, suitable for younger tots as well as older kids. And the last element, south of the buffer, there is a right-of-way set aside for the Red Car, which we're hoping to be able to connect to San Pedro and provide a connection throughout the entire waterfront. This slide shows an artist rendering of a view from the buffer. This is looking west from the large plaza area. You can see the restroom facilities in this area, the splash fountain off to the side, and beyond that, the flat, open fields. On the left side, you can see one of the accessible pathways leading up to a promenade along the top of the berm, as well as the berm itself, the gently sloping area there, which is all usable space for picnics and other gatherings as well. This project, again, is part of the Tray Pack EIR at this point. The port's goal is to finish that document by the end of this year, and we are already under design on this project. We're nearing 80%. We will move to construction very shortly after the completion of this EIR, and we're expecting 12 to 14 months to complete construction on this project. The other project that we're dealing with on the Wilmington waterfront is the Avalon Corridor Concept. This goes from Lagoon Avenue over Gabraut Avenue, and then down Avalon Boulevard, right here to the waterfront where we are at Banning's Landing today. Banning's Landing is right there. This project features commercial development opportunities between Harry Bridges and C Street. There are a number of existing businesses in that area. They will remain. The port is not proposing to acquire any more businesses for this, and we will infill that with other appropriate uses. Largely, our research has shown that most of the demand is going to be for light industrial types. We'll look for that. We're also looking for some commercial and possibly a restaurant, and we have a development area down at the waterfront for that. One of the other main features of this is that access to the waterfront that we had talked about is one of the main goals. And that is provided in a landscape belt from Harry Bridges Boulevard down over the railroad tracks, over Rellocated Water Street, in this large landscape bridge structure to the waterfront. It steps up on the north side in a series of terraces, steps back down on the waterfront, providing an amphitheater setting, looking down at the slip. There are also ramp towers on each ends to allow disabled access up to the top of the site, and the southern ramp tower will be further elevated to perform a viewing platform. The waterfront itself will feature a promenade along the south edge, all along 1,800 feet of waterfront, rather than the small amount that we currently have here at Banning's Landing. It will relocate the Banning's Landing parking lot and expand it. I know that that's been an issue today. We'll have twice as much parking in this site. We'll have additional parking on the other side of the bridge here, and we'll have plaza area, along with trees and other landscaping, here along the waterfront, to allow people to take better advantage of being here at the water. You may have noticed, coming in here, that there were two large oil tanks just north of this property. That is an obstruction to this project at this point. They're owned by the Department of Water and Power and leased to the Valero Oil Company. The port is working very closely with both of those entities to get that tankage relocated and be able to tear those tanks down in order to build this project. Knowing that that's going to take some time, we also have an interim project to show that we're not going to wait for these tanks to go. If that takes a few years, we're still going to get something built out there. We can build all of the infrastructure for the commercial development in this area. We can start on our open space in this area. In fact, this is the Avalon Triangle Park, which we have been trying to get built for a number of years. We are working with the state to get, sign off on the environmental cleanup for that site. And we're going to build all of the improvements down at the waterfront, including the observation tower, the promenade, and the plazas adjacent to Banning's Landing. So this can be done even before the tanks go. This last slide shows a rendering of how the waterfront access is going to look when it's finished. You can see that large, open space leading over the tracks, so people won't have to worry about getting caught with the train. There will be a South Wilmington grade separation built that will allow vehicular access down to the waterfront, again, separated from the trains. We have the viewing tower. We have several piers leading out into the water, trying to get the community of Wilmington connected back to its waterfront, which has been such an important part of its history. As we said earlier, we're working on a master plan. We're working to get that finished up for this area. We're then going to move into an environmental document for this specific project. We're hoping to be able to finish that and design for the interim, at least the interim portion of this project in 2008. And then construction for that will take probably about 18 months. Construction for the remainder of the project, including the bridge, will take longer, and also will be contingent on getting rid of the tanks. So that basically concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to take any questions that you may have. Thanks.
I really appreciate that, and I'm very concerned about the tanks being moved. As you can see, and colleagues, when you leave here, if you go back up Avalon, you'll see those DWP tanks right there, and they're right in the middle of this beautiful grassy, open space area that connects Wilmington to its waterfront. So it's been difficult, but I, you know, want to hear today, again, that we have commitments from the port, from DWP, and we know we want Valero to also be cooperative as we look to remove that heavy industrial use, which I think will really impede this whole waterfront process. And let me just have you, before, I know Ed has a question, but again, I've been looking at slides like this for a while now, and this community has, really is farther along than actually even San Pedro in terms of having a consensus, really buying into this project. We approved this project in concept before our city council, seems like a couple of years ago, yeah, 2004. So I want to hear again, when can we actually see construction start on this project?
We are, again, planning to start construction on the buffer portion of the project as soon as we can finish the Tray Pack EIR, and that is targeted for being, to be finished this year.
This year? Okay. I want to see bulldozers on that property as soon as possible, because this community really, first of all, this community's waited way too long, but this community needs to be rewarded for their efforts and working together. And it wasn't all, you know, peaches and cream. I mean, there were some issues, but we worked them out, and this community deserves to be thanked by moving this process along as quickly as possible. Many people still probably don't believe in their lifetime they're going to see this project, but I'm going to say we are going to see it, but we want to see those bulldozers as quickly as possible.
Me too.
And I know Ed had a...
Ed Reyes, followed by Dennis Sein.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to congratulate Councilman Hahn and the city family for getting to this place and understanding the potential impact and the improvements. Obviously reflects probably decades of frustration in terms of how we want to see our city evolve. But in that same vein, this body, this council, back in March 2003, we introduced a young adult apprenticeship program. In March of 2006, we approved the development performance standards for every general manager to speak to their ability to hire young people with jobs for our city. October 06, we issued a motion that speaks to how we reinvest our own city dollars back into our communities. Back in November, we also got a report from Daniel Fleming, the president of LA Economic Roundtable. In very broad strokes, he brought forth the realization that this city generates about $3.5 billion annually, as far as economic impacts. We're generating more than 34,000 jobs, according to this report. Unfortunately, about $1.1 billion leave the county, let alone the city, and these are opportunities that essentially amount to about 10,000 jobs. So my question to you, in your process here, are you coordinating, or are you looking at how we hire our young people in Wilmington, in the San Pedro area? As we look at the contracts, as we look at the issues of development, understanding that this is a sketch, I understand you're doing preliminary work for an EIR. This is concept. This is issues that you have to deal with the Coastal Commission, the state authorities as far as VTSC. There's a lot of other issues that are folded into this. But in this process, how direct or how clear are you as to putting together the systems needed to hire local youth for these jobs? When we look at our gang issue, when we look at our issues of folks who are leaving school, the relevance of education to their experience is connected to the ability to make a decent, honorable, real dollar. We have that ability to influence that environment. I want to know exactly what you've been doing in that regard.
Thanks.
Councilman Reyes, I'm Mike Christiansen, Deputy Executive Director at the Port of LA for Development. And we have heard this same challenge from our own Board of Harbor Commissioners. At the Board of Harbor Commissioners meeting a month ago, we implemented a new small business program, which is now being written into every contract we're putting out at the port, which is targeted on small businesses. And we are also focusing on local small businesses. We are in the process of developing a local element to this program, and it is really to direct this very thing. We want to be sure that the work that we're doing at the port gives preference to our local communities above all others, so that we can be sure that the money we're spending leverages, leverages these communities and gives them those opportunities.
Okay, so you're concentrating on the small business layer of this community. Are you speaking to the nonprofits, to the job training programs, to the gang intervention programs, to identify a pool of candidates who could perhaps begin apprenticeships and/or training to qualify for jobs? Have you been able to delineate to that level those opportunities?
We're, Councilman, we're just starting that effort. We have, we have a program at the port called Diversity Exchange that we're working with to get organizations registered that can bring those people forward. We are, we have been involved in, and are now accelerating our outreach as part of our small business program, to try to get to those same individuals. So the answer is yes, we're working that direction. We're accelerating our efforts to achieve that goal.
There has been substantial effort, and we learned a lot when we were building the Staples Arena, working through the community development department, and looking at the various nonprofits in that particular area. We created a network in which we're able to drive funds into these entities, whose sole responsibility was to identify candidates for jobs, working with the unions, working with apprenticeship programs. The same general infrastructure is being used for the Grand Avenue project, the same type of approach is being used in other areas in the city. Is that something that you're, the Harbor, is it the Harbor, that the Harbor Department working this? Who's responsible for these decision-making efforts?
In, as far as the Harbor Department is concerned, that is our executive director and the senior staff, which I represent. We also work closely with the councilwoman's office. In fact, I had the pleasure of being with her at the community chamber of commerce meeting here in Wilmington earlier in the week, in which she laid out a lot of her broad agendas related to the gang intervention program, the gap programs. We're solidly behind that. We're looking at ways we can support the councilwoman in that.
Is the community development department working with you?
Yes, very much so. And we're working with both the mayor's department, community redevelopment agencies, along with the councilwoman's office on those issues.
And I think, Mike, what you're hearing is, the city council has, as the policymakers... What you're hearing is, the city council has, as the policymakers in the city of Los Angeles, we've decided to sort of take a different tack as it relates to preventing kids from joining gangs or making sure that all of our young people have opportunities for jobs. And we're now asking every one of our city departments in their thinking, whether it's a project or whether it's openings, to really begin looking at local youth to hire for some of these major projects. And I will say, Ed, this Wilmington waterfront is going to be built with a project labor agreement. And so we know when there's a project labor agreement in place, one of the good things about that is then the individual unions have more of an opportunity to bring in young people as apprenticeship programs, and they always make an effort to hire locally. So having a project labor agreement on this waterfront really, I think, will help to achieve some of what you're looking for, which is to hire young people, particularly in Wilmington, to have great experience in not only improving their community, but learning a skill and a job that may benefit them for their entire lives.
And just in closing, if I may, I don't want to sound antagonistic, believe me, that's, my tone of voice is more a sense of urgency. An urgency when I see that over $1 billion of our own city tax dollars goes outside of our own area and depriving 10,000 jobs in our own communities. That's the tone you're hearing. What I would appreciate, and if the chair of the Housing Community Economic Development Department would support me, and I don't believe he's here today, but I would love to hear a report from you at our ACD committee, speaking to how you're structuring these jobs, opportunities. I'd love to see how CDD is supporting you. This is all in the effort of figuring out how we can be more expedient with our dollars and our time to reach some of these young people. But to them, yesterday was already too late. We need to get, give them the opportunities to have an option, other than what they're doing today in relation to the gang culture and all the issues that draw them into that dead end. So I appreciate your hard work, but this council has passed three years ago the notion of making every department head accountable for their budget, and we wanted to know how much of their decision-making is actually allowing for local jobs to be created for our youth. So I appreciate your support and look forward to seeing you in ACD. And I'll be asking the chair if he would invite you to give us that report.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll make that one of the first assignments to the new economic development director that we are in the process of hiring as we speak.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zein, I think, wanted to make another, make a comment as well.
Thank you, Madam President. The questions that Mr. Reyes asked, it's a citywide issue with jobs and creating that and obviously help reduce the gang activity that we all have to live with on a daily basis. My focus is a little different. Before I say that, I want to acknowledge the neighborhood councils that are here. And Janice, I remember when they were just in the infancy, we never thought it would evolve to what it is today. So to all of you neighborhood council folks, thank you for being here and thank you for sticking with it all those years. And also, Janice, your love for the 15th district and all that's been done while you've been a council member here. Expanding of the port, I know that I've heard conversation about expansion of the port for goods, for the commerce that comes in, the cars and the appliances, et cetera. Is there any interference with this plan and the plan of the commercialization of the port? Is there any conflict or can they be parallel to the benefit of both? The environmental issue as well, the commerce, as well as the ability within the Wilmington area to have a destination point for people? I come from the San Fernando Valley, a two-hour commute this morning, miserable down the 101, miserable down the harbor, until I got to Wilmington, then it was nice. And I was driving down the freeway saying, I know I'm going to Wilmington, I'm not going to that other place, SP, I'm not going there today, I'm going to Wilmington. I learn when I get spanked. But the focus of all the commerce that comes in here, and as I traveled and I got off the freeway and went down Figueroa, and then I went down bridges and I saw these big commercial trucks leaving, I'm looking at this whole environment where you want to have a destination, not just for the people of this community, but for other people of Los Angeles and other communities to gather as an inviting location. Then I heard from the gentleman that talked about the pollution from the trucks, the diesel pollution, all those issues. I know it's a mixed bag, but are they compatible? Is there going to be conflict? Are there going to be issues that can be resolved so you can have the destination point, have the beautification of the area, and still not negatively impact commerce, which obviously we want this port to be productive for the goods and products that come in, in the Alameda Corridor that connects everything? So if you can respond to all those multiple questions. But you're from this area, Wilmington, so you're smart to be able to respond to all those.
Well, I will do my best.
Thank you.
You're absolutely right that that is the goal, is to be able to do all of those things at the same time. This project, especially this project, I believe, is beginning to accomplish that by, we're still looking to expand and improve the TRAPAC container terminal to the south. What this project does is provide a buffer that wasn't there and that should be there between the community and that commerce. So as the commerce does increase and go through, the community isn't as impacted from that. That's one of the things that this project does. With regard to the air quality down here, we know that that's an issue, and that is something that will be dealt with in the EIR specifically on this project. The port has a clean air plan that we're putting forward to try to reduce the air impacts portwide through this whole area. And that will also be specifically addressed in the TRAPAC EIR for specific improvements at TRAPAC before they can go forward. So the answer is yes, we are trying to do all of those things, improve commerce, clean up the air, and provide this development opportunities, this world-class thing to attract people down to the waterfront. And one of the things that we have is a working port for people to come down to the waterfront to look at. So we really feel that that is one of the draws and one of the things that will bring people down to the improvements that we make here.
And on the transportation issue, people coming from the west side down the 405 to the 105, or coming from the San Fernando Valley down the 101 through Hollywood, is there any issue on transit where you'll be able to utilize some kind of public transit instead of fighting gridlock on the freeway? And I'm not kidding when I talk about two-hour commute from my residence this morning to get here. That's a long, well, I know, once a month you come to Van Nuys, and that's, I told you you could spend the weekend in the valley, but you don't choose to do that.
Yeah, it's at your house, so I'm not sure.
We have nice places in the valley. Her husband would be upset. And here's the dating game, folks. Our next contestant, Janice, on. Dial in, 554-122. So is there any aspect to help the commute so you don't have to sit two-hour gridlock to go to dinner when you have these establishments down here? Because I remember the port's a call. It used to be a very inviting place. And over the years, the commute turns people off. They want to stay in their neighborhoods. But if you don't bring in the infusion of dollars from other parts of this region, then it's just going to be this community that's going to be able to benefit, and it's not going to generate all those dollars. Is there any transportation plan as part of this?
The old metro on the 110 out of Convention Center.
Thank you, Mr. Voice.
There is, there is a transportation element to it. It is mostly centered around the project area. There are, there is public transit that goes directly through the Wilmington area. There's a major MTA rapid bus line that runs down Harry Bridges Boulevard and up Avalon Boulevard. We have actually provided cutouts in the berm that provide access at grade level through that to the bus stops on Harry Bridges Boulevard. And again, we are trying to bring the red car, which will provide a linkage within the port area, but not so much in a larger regional sense.
Don Copeland spoke out, and I have actually been supporting a public transit system going from downtown to the harbor area. I've asked the Port of Los Angeles to spend the million dollars to do a feasibility study because the nexus is just what you all are talking about. We're on the freeway with trucks. We're trying to move goods in the fifth largest port complex in the world. So if we can get more commuter cars off the roads, that will help with goods movement. And I think the gold line, as we're, I think there already is a gold line, but the harbor line that would come directly to, from downtown to the harbor area is a perfect idea. It could connect with the green line, so people who are coming on the cruise ships can get to the airport. We are the one area of the city that really is disconnected in terms of public transportation. And so that's something I'm pushing for, and I would love to have the support of everybody here to really move forward with a harbor line.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
I just want to, I just want to say that linking all those together, it will be an opportunity not only for Wilmington and the 15th district, but for all the people of Los Angeles. And if we don't do it, then it'll never get done. So your timeframe, within the next couple of years, people are going to start seeing some movement take place.
On this, on our project? Absolutely. Yes, very much so.
Thank you, thank you. And Janice, thank you for sticking with it, because I know sometimes it can be very frustrating, but your community here definitely supports what you're doing. And those folks out in the San Fernando Valley, they're going to come down and visit and spend their dollars down here.
So we'll go, Mr. Labange, then Mr. Reyes.
I would say, I absolutely support this Wilmington waterfront, and it goes in tune with so many things we're trying to do as, Mr. Reyes is, and all of our efforts on the Los Angeles River, returning to the river when the city was founded. I want to thank Janice Han for always pushing for this, and this is so important for us to see it and to be it. And I know the first complaint she made when she came in, she turned to me, she said, why are those windows closed? Well, be it from Hollywood, the cameraman need the light to make sure that they can get it. So I explained that to her, because she wanted us to see the water, which is right there. And the key is the water and to celebrate the water. And the one thing I want to say is the issue of the waterfront is so important to get it done and to push. And if you say it's 2009, make it 2008 and a half. Just push, because the people want it and they need it, and we have not been able to be as successful. And I think it's because Los Angeles grew so fast that they didn't plan accordingly. So I wanted to compliment you, Ms. Han, and your staff on that, and also the port's staff to look the long range here and to see where you've been and where you're going and that you're doing the right thing and you have the support of the council. On the berm issue, it's so important. They did a very, very nice thing at the Los Angeles Zoo parking area, where it's right adjacent to a freeway. A developer who was building in Burbank took the soil from what is the Burbank Media District and created a berm. So now you didn't see the freeway right there, but you saw an equestrian trail, a berm, landscaping, and it solved the problem. That's so important to do the berm on that. And finally, Mr. Zein, the only way we're going to make a difference on the transit if we individually do things like Wendy's doing all the time now, she's riding the transit all the time, that's the way to do it. And I think we will have to push ourselves because the late, great John Farrell, when they dedicated the first leg of the red line at downtown, congratulated the late, great Mayor Tom Bradley. And if you remember the election in 1973, Tom Bradley said he'll have transit in 18 months. He did say that. When John come up and spoke there in 1992, he said, Tom, you're about right about one thing. It took 18 years, 18 years to get to the point. So we got to push a little hard on that to correct it. And also, one other thing, too, on the opposite end, I'm working with Mr. Parks, who's our MTA representative. The transit way that ends at Adams Boulevard that doesn't connect, there's some thinking that now has to go place to where actually it goes. And also to get a fourth lane underneath the harbor freeway right there at the 405.
Do you think it's a good idea to have a harbor line coming right down here?
Absolutely, and it should be a Y.
Light rail, right along the freeway.
But also talk, you know, and your father was the champion for the blue line to Long Beach. Have a father-daughter combination, which is so good. He'd be looking down smiling. You have a Y that goes from the blue line into San Pedro. That's the buzzard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. It's always good to get a good history lesson from Tom Labange on our great city. I just want to say that when Ms. Han talked about mass transit and mentioned the word green line, the green line is a mile and a half from LAX, a mile and a half from LAX. We're going to put it into LAX, and we're going to bring it down into the South Bay. In fact, there's strong support among the South Bay cog, all the 30 communities there, to have it go down to the Redondo Beach Galleria and come all the way up the coast and go into the airport and then go up Lincoln Boulevard. We don't have enough north-south mass transit. And the gridlock in both Ms. Han's district and mine is directly related to that. So I applaud her for her vision on the green line, supporting us on it, and of course, her vision here today in what we've just experienced. Congratulations, Janice.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. In reviewing and seeing these plans, which I believe are wonderful, I wanted to ask you, to what degree are you looking at stormwater harvesting technologies and water treatment, looking at capturing the stormwater runoff and dealing with the cleansing of our waterways? To what degree are you folding in those types of goals in your design and in your architecture?
That is absolutely a part of our design. All of the stormwater that falls on this project will be captured and treated before it's released. We did look into storing this water for reuse in irrigation throughout the project. The feasibility of that was a little bit difficult because of the way we get rains in this area. We get a fair bit of rain and then nothing for a long while, and storing that water becomes very difficult because it will, problems will happen with it, and it will grow organisms over time. But all of that water will be treated. It's absolutely a part of this project. Just having the green space, rather than having all that water falling on concrete and then just running right into the storm, will make a big difference.
When you look at the contamination levels on our streetways, because you have such a high volume of trucks, fuel, fumes, when it rains, it changes in form, it lands on the street. What type, are you looking at the trees and how we look at the landscaping to create these opportunities for oxygenization and water treatment?
Yes, we are looking at using the landscape to do that, to biofilter, filter the stormwater as well as allow for infiltration. And then beyond that, we're looking at structural best management practices to go beyond what we can't do with the landscaping.
And to what degree is Public Works coordinating with you, given the existing infrastructure and how you connect with existing underground pipes, all of that? I mean, is that being folded in as well?
Absolutely. We're coordinating very closely with Public Works. Much of this project, or parts of this project, are being done on the public right-of-way in the streets. We have to go through a permitting process with them, and we've been working very closely with them throughout.
Great. That, to me, just sounds like more jobs, so that's great.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think, Ms. Han, we're ready for public comments.
I will call your names probably three at a time, so you can get ready to line up behind that.
If I could just add one thing, we have a good deal of the Wilmington Waterfront Development Subcommittee here today, and I would like to recognize them and thank them for all of their tireless work over the past few years to get this project moving forward. You could stand up on the Wilmington Waterfront Subcommittee, and especially Ken Melendez, the president and chair of the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Gary Kern, Charlie Rico, and Ken Melendez. Make your way to the podium.
Madam President, council members, it's a great pleasure to have all of you visit the fine city of Wilmington. I've been participating in this project since its infancy, five years ago. This Wilmington Waterfront Development Committee is not a rubber stamp committee by any means. We have some very heated discussions, we come to conclusions, and we try to move forward. The public process, the public hearings that we've gone through, the consensuses that we have been able to build through community input and then come back to the committee is what you see here today. I believe this to be a very, very worthwhile project, a great benefit to Wilmington, and a tremendous enhancement for our community. Thank you.
Welcome, the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Charlie Rico. I'm a lifeline, a lifetime resident of Wilmington. I am a member of PCAC as an alternate. I am also a member of the Development for the Wilmington Waterfront. I came to my position via the Committees for the completion of Banning's Landing. The Committee, after being dissolved, made it possible for several members of the Committee to be invited to join and become members of PCAC. I made the decision to be an alternate because I knew this much about the master plan, and Mr. Frank Herrera, also a member of the Banning's Landing Committee, not present here today. Together, we made the decision to join and become a part of the process, mainly because we wanted to see what plans were in store for Wilmington. We attended meetings for one year and gave San Pedro the benefit of our vote in the effort for its development of their waterfront. of their waterfront. It took a year, but it finally happened. Among others, our good friend, Janice Hahn, and her brother, James.
And my husband.
Put Wilmington on, as a household name. We thank you, Janice, and we thank your brother also, James, your brother.
Yeah.
Our former mayor also had a part in this decision-making and process. We also thank the members of the PCAC for their support in recognizing that Wilmington deserved a part of the equation.
Your time's up, Charlie. Do you want to wrap it up?
Okay. We commend the Sasaki Design Firm. They have done an outstanding design concept for the project in Wilmington. And we need this green belt. It has become a reality, and you have favored us with 100% vote in the past. We hope that you do it again. And we thank you for that.
Thanks, Charlie.
And I thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work. Ken Melendez.
Thank you. Welcome to Wilmington. Ken Melendez, Chair of the Wilmington Waterfront Development Subcommittee. I've been to over 300 meetings in the last five years in regards to this project, thousands of my own personal hours. I'm a retired Wilmington businessperson, and also a former 20-year resident of Wilmington. I now live in Harbor City. I want to say that the beauty of this project is it is community-driven, it's been an open public process, it's been a partnership with the Port of Los Angeles, it has something for everyone, it balances port operations with the community, it improves the quality of life in Wilmington, provides for commercial development, waterfront access, 30-acre landscape buffer. It's a win for everyone. In addition to that, it's an opportunity of a lifetime. Join us and support the final plans Wilmington Waterfront, help to make the most biggest, the biggest and most positive In the history of Wilmington, it's a reality. It's a historic project. This project has something for everyone. I want to read the support for this. Councilwoman Janice Hahn, LA County Supervisor Don Canaby, Wilmington Waterfront Subcommittee, Wilmington Neighborhood Council, Wilmington Business Improvement District, Wilmington Community Organization, Wilmington Save Our Homes Coalition, Wilmington Friends of Banning's Landing, Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council, Wilmington Chamber of Commerce, Port Community Advisory Committee, Wilmington Rotary Club, Wilmington Lions Club, Wilmington Coordinating Council, Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. There's a tremendous support for this project. And lastly, let me say this. I need to thank the mayor, the current mayor. Need to thank the current mayor for coming down here and declaring fair share for Wilmington and making this project go. We did have, and I also want to thank Janice, because she's totally committed to the 15th District, everyone. Not just people that vote for her, not just people that contribute to her, but you see improvements all throughout her district. And you see her speaking up for those that don't have a voice. Also, the current Harvard Board of Commissioners, the first thing they did when they came down here, they decided to have meetings in Wilmington. So they have a meeting in San Pedro, and then they have, once a month, they also have a meeting in Wilmington. And they've been committed to this, getting this project finally done.
Thanks, Ken.
Wait, give me one more second.
All right.
Also, Dr. Nats has done a great job taking over the port, a very difficult job. And all the staff, and I'd like the staff right here on this road to stand up, because they've been working with us, busting their ass to make this thing become a reality. And it hasn't been easy, but... You know, I thank everyone who's supported this, elected, Janice, the mayor, everyone, for their leadership, their commitment, and also their action. Because leadership and commitment doesn't mean anything if you don't do the action. And this is the action part. So everything that we've been through, if this doesn't get built, to me, means nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Colleagues, I think what you just witnessed was the depth of emotion that not just Ken, but many, many people in the Wilmington community have felt and are feeling about the possibility, the hope, that finally, this community will get more than its fair share, and will finally have a development that has been long-promised, hoped for, and they're finally seeing that as a reality. So the feelings run very deep in this community, and we should all remember that, as we try to push our departments everywhere to complete projects that will be for the benefit of the people. Okay, Mary Gant, Joe Gatlin, and Lucia Moreno-Laneres.
Good morning. My name is Mary Gant. I'm here today as a Wilmington resident, as a member of the Wilmington Community Organization, as a participant in the Wilmington Waterfront workshops. I want to welcome you to Wilmington. I look forward to the day when this vision, this hard work for many people in the community, when this vision becomes a reality. I look forward to the day, as Councilman Zein said, when not only will people come here to spend their money, but when I can come here in my own backyard and spend my money. That I don't have to go to another community to buy that Starbucks coffee. That I don't have to go to another community for fine dining. When I don't have to go to another community that's, you know, 2 miles away from my home to make my morning walks along the waterfront. This is a passionate community who cares about every single person that's here. And this project is for everyone that's here. Everyone can benefit.
Your excuse at one.
And, you know, I was skeptical, to be really honest with you, in the beginning, because I had seen, I grew up in this community, and I had seen our voices be, fall on deaf ears. No one listened. They just kind of put us aside. We were kind of forgotten. And I want to thank Councilwoman Hahn, because she listened to our voice, and she made it a reality. And she gave us back our voice. And you haven't heard a stop talking since. So this is only the beginning of the possibilities that can happen to Wilmington. And I really, really look forward to that day. And I invite everyone to come and enjoy something as beautiful as this new waterfront project, and to open your arms to a community that opens their arms to you. So, thank you.
Joe Gatlin.
Joe Gatlin, President of Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council, PCAC voting member for over four years, and a proud resident of San Pedro, along with Mayor James Hahn and his sister, Janice Hahn. One of the things, I wanted to, a couple of things that Councilman Reyes brought up, and I hope this is also remembered in building this, and I'm complete supporter of this, and I'm proud to say that I have been, and I've gone to literally hundreds of meetings also with Ken, and I think this is just tremendous. But Mr. Reyes brought up the fact that he wanted working coming from the Wilmington area. Right north of the project, there was a housing project that was eliminated. A lot of those people came into San Pedro for low-income housing, and we like to also be able to think that they also will have a shot at some of these jobs and not just Wilmington. But again, over the years, and if anyone from the Valley of whatever knows, that Wilmington and San Pedro always had a friendly rivalry, probably mostly because of sports. But to see this rivalry put down because of what's going on in the port, because at PCAC, we supported each other, and I'm very proud to say I support this project, and I am also proud to say a friend of Ken Melendez. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lucia Moreno. I'm a 37-year resident of, I'm not 37, I lived in Wilmington for 37 years, 45 in April. And I work in Wilmington. I run a credit union, the low-income credit union, the community recycling the funds that we have. We deposit, make a deposit, we're able to make a loan. I serve on the board of the Wilmington YMCA, and it's a unique YMCA. The classes, you hear the music in Spanish. We do all kinds of little fundraisers to help people pay for their membership dues, to be able to afford camp. I served on the committee that found the location for the Senior Citizen Center in Wilmington, and I serve on the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, was a founding member. I know it's five years of service, but it was actually a year and months before that, planning to get it to happen. And I mention all that just to say that many of us that are here supporting this program, this project, hoping that we get to see it, that we're involved in so many other things, and that even though I may speak to you only as a resident today, there is support, there is consensus, there has been compromise reached by so many in this community to finally see this project done. And I know that there's, you know, sometimes your vote is 14 to 0, and sometimes it's 10, and others have voted no. But the project still deserves the vote, and it goes through. And that's, sometimes that's what's going to happen with this project that we have today. There is something for everyone. There isn't everything that everybody wanted, but we've tried to include everyone in the community. I haven't been head of that committee, but I've attended numerous of the meetings that they've had, and everyone had a chance to have their voice heard. Doesn't mean you get to be obeyed, but your voice was heard and it was counted. I hope that when you take your vote, when you have your opportunity, you listen to all of these people that have spoken and take it into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucia. Raul Orozco, Dennis McCarberry, and Chris Shaw.
Good morning. My name is Raul Orozco. I'm a 32-year resident in Wilmington. I get a little bit emotional like Candace, so you gotta excuse me. Wilmington is heart with the harbor, as some of you might know. And as you know, we gotta take care of our heart, because it carries a lot of vital, vital oxygen to the rest of our organs. And that's the way I feel Wilmington has to be taken care of. Has to be taken care of, because we are a vital part of the economy. And for many years, we've been neglected. And the ball has been turned around, has been passed to Wilmington, thanks to Janice Hahn. This project now, it's, like they said, it's been going on for five years. It's been quite a battle. I'm very happy. I feel like a stepchild that gets promised some tennis shoes and says, "Just wait until I get paid Friday." But they'll get there. That's the way I feel right now. Hopefully, Friday will come soon, and we get this buffer zone that we desperately need. Just recently, at Banning Park, they're building a, like a gate that they want to enclose the Banning's Landing because of vandalism and what have you. And we're losing a lot of open space to that. And so we need to come up with new ideas of new places that we can have open space for kids to run around, play. And so this would be a really good place to do that. One thing that I wanted to also say, I just read the headlines today of the newspaper. They were talking about five schools, local schools, that didn't make the federal. One was Wilmington Middle School. That's the only middle school we have, and it's failing. And we're talking about college and stuff like that, but we need to start with the elementary, junior high, and high school. And just like Mr. Reyes said, we need opportunities for kids work, but we need to teach them how to do those skills. We need to start in elementaries. Thank you.
Thanks, Raul.
Getting alternative program. My name's Dennis McCarberry, and I'm speaking as an individual, but I want to let you know that I'm active in the community. I'm a member of the Wilmington Neighborhood Council. I'm the parliamentarian. I'm on the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce Board. I'm on the Friends of Banning's Landing Board. I'm a past president of the Wilmington Rotary Club, and I'm a PCAC alternate. And I've been involved in the community here for about 40 years, and I'm retired. I want to tell you that I support this project wholeheartedly. It's been a long time coming. I won't go through the history that nobody's talked about, but it has 10 more years on top of everything you've heard about of the last five to seven years. The basic message I would like to convey is the community feels, and we feel, and I feel, that the time is now. We need to do this as soon as we possibly can. So I just want to briefly say, I urge your support, and look forward to working with you to accomplish the new waterfront for Wilmington. Thank you.
A little short. Good morning. Thank you for coming to Wilmington. Thank you, Janice, for all your help. We appreciate it. And thank you, City Council, for listening attentively to all the speakers.
Yes.
I've been to a few school board meetings, and that's not always the case. So we appreciate this. Wilmington is behind this project 100%. And as the other speakers have said, there's something for everybody. And if you support this for Wilmington, and get it done as quickly as possible, we will become a jewel of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Hoffman, Donna Ethington, and Patricia Benoit. I may also thank my colleagues for listening intently. It's great. It means a lot.
Once again, thank you for coming to Wilmington. And before I, I'm the Executive Director for the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a resident for over 30 years, so I'll speak on behalf of the chamber's support, and my own. But before I said anything, I wanted to make sure that you got an invitation that I sent out for you to have, to have a meal here in Wilmington before you leave. And there's a few restaurants that we picked out and suggested that you might stop by, that we know you will enjoy. And excuse me for saying this, but we want you to leave Wilmington with a good taste in your mouth. And these are places that will do that. We think you might want to come back too, because as I've seen, some of the council meetings usually don't have this much fun. So we invite you back soon.
That's true. That is true. That is true.
On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we support the Wilmington Waterfront Project wholeheartedly. We think that it'll be, bring social, it has a very positive social impact, recreational opportunities for our children and for adults alike. In addition, it'll become an economic anchor for our community. We noted that it's here at the foot of Avalon Boulevard. We've already seen, from the chamber side in my office, people who have shown an interest and have purchased properties for future investment. There's a new building going across from, just kitty corner almost, from the Wilmington Menusal Building. This is starting to be rebuilt. And so that process has begun. So we ask for your wholehearted support for this project. On a personal note, I've gone to all the workshops myself. I've seen the participation, and I have to say, this is truly a consensus, and it's important that it's a consensus. It's just not what I want, and I've said it at a couple of other meetings, if it was just what I wanted, there would be a bait, a bait store there, in addition to a dock for boats. But it's not. Again, it's a consensus of the community, and thank you again for coming to Wilmington.
Can I just ask a question? Is the neon still bright at the Hotel Cortez? Huh? Is the neon still working?
At the Hotel Cortez?
Yeah.
Oh, the Don Hotel, Don Hotel?
The Don Hotel.
The Don Hotel. I got my hotels wrong.
Don Hotel.
It looks better than ever. You need to walk in.
Is the neon not working?
No, it isn't.
Well, you want it to work?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm the head of the Art Committee for the Council. It's one of our projects in 2007. With Ms. Hahn's push and permission, let's move forward.
So approved. Yeah, I think so. Okay, Donna Ethington.
Well, this is tough. You know, these guys didn't leave much left for me to say. You know, I'm the former Chair of the Wilmington Waterfront Development Subcommittee, where all this started with a community plan, you know, that the council approved back in 2004. And, you know, since that time, and even before that, I mean, some of these And you know, since that time, and even before that, I mean, some of these plans go back, what, to the 80s? I mean, some of the earlier community planning efforts. And this waterfront redevelopment area incorporates a lot of those visions. I mean, some of the people have passed away in those years, you know, waiting for us to get something along here. So it really is, well, let me just read the last paragraph of my letter to the councilmen and to the commissioners, that this master plan represents nearly five years of broad community input and incorporates many of the visions of earlier community planning efforts that date back to the 80s. It provides regional benefits, shields local residents from heavy port operations, and offers a variety of features to meet the needs of this diverse community.
Well said.
Thank you.
Well said.
As part of the Rotary Club, you know, I conducted essay contests for three years in a row to see what the kids wanted, to make sure that they had the input, because, you know, it's mostly adults that come to these meetings. The kids overwhelmingly asked for parks, water parks, skate parks, sports fields, a pier, a beach, water activities, amusement centers, and nice restaurants. You know, this is what the kids are saying. This is what you need to keep us out of trouble, off the streets. We need to be able to have an area to play in. We've got most of it, and I'm still working on the beach. We're gonna try to connect the Wilmington marinas now to this project, maybe through the, Chris is laughing over here, I've been bugging the port for years to connect these marinas because they're isolated too, to try to bring them into this plan. And this will serve, you know, not only, as Dan said, as an economic anchor, but an anchor to actually give Wilmington back a much larger waterfront.
Thank you, Donna. And after Patricia, the last two will be John Chaffel and Glenda Sands. Those are our last two speakers.
Hi, I'm Patty Benoit from the Friends of Banning's Landing, they're director. And thank you for saying Benoit correctly. I do appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Be we, miss you.
Let's see, I'd first like to mention the board members that are still in the audience. I think Irene had to leave. We have a few that are here. Peter Rivera, Dr. Peter Rivera, Domingo Pardo, Louis from Harbor College had to leave. But we had a nice representation of board members coming in support of this. When I'm speaking, I'm behalf of the families that come here. The Friends approved renting the Landing to private parties after drawing up many contracts about two and a half years ago. And since then, we've had two sweet 16 parties. We've had four family reunions, 16 weddings, and 14 quinceañeras without any damage to this building. Many, many, many kids have been here in party attire, and there's been no damage to the building, which is really speaks well, I think, for our community kids. But the family aspect that I'm thinking about is after the families are through here, then I do a debriefing. How did they like it? What did they think? What's their opinion of the Landing? Were they happy? And one of the things they were amazed about is the beautiful building that's here. And then they talk about the meetings, because many of them have attended the meetings that put this waterfront plan together, and they have hope and believe and raised expectations, not expecting that it's not gonna happen and it's just Wilmington, but their expectation now is when? It's really gonna happen? When's it gonna happen? We're really excited about it. So just to bring that, because that comes right from the families that have been here with the kids. That's about it. Thank you very much. I'm very much in support.
Thank you. Okay, our last two speakers.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you guys down my, this is down my neck of the woods. I'm John Chaffel, I'm a third-generation pile driver. This is what I really do around here. We're the guys, Councilwoman Reyes, that are gonna be actually doing this work. We're gonna be building the piers. We're gonna be building the bridges, just as like we also built, are building the Gold Line. We're building the Expo Line. When that gets built, we're dealing with CrossFit Staples Center, where we do the shoring and so forth.
And you'll build the Harbor Line.
And we're gonna build that breakwater, and we're gonna bring that Harbor Line and the Green Line that goes over there. I personally worked on the Green Line and the Blue Line and the Metro Link and goes forward. We, when you talk about apprenticeship programs, our locals base here in Wilmington, if there's any zip code that has built more of these major structures that come through, it has been the residents of Wilmington who come down and get a job through us. We need to get more work, you know. I don't represent consultants or analysts or, you know, people who run meetings and so forth. When this thing gets started, we're gonna get people placed. I'd love to talk to, I've worked with small business advisory councils. I'm working with the community learning centers now in San Pedro. Went to Port of L.A. Charter School. I went to, I've gone to East LA Occupational Center. I've gone to all these different job fairs, particularly with regards to the school developments and so forth. I just think that this plan, it should be supported. I was there at the beginning when we got started on these things, or one of the beginnings that got started on this. And I think it's important for these people, for the people of Wilmington, just like my father, I lived in San Pedro, worked in Wilmington basically most of our lives, to get this thing started. They deserve the best.
Commissioner, I just wanted to say that, one, I applaud you and all your efforts. I know you did a great job when you moved the CRA. I know you understand the intricacies of how every department is supposed to connect.
Right.
And how we're supposed to leverage each other. But the fact is, when you look at the extraordinary number of $1 billion leaving the city, for me, that means that each community is like a bucket full of holes.
Right.
And the dollars are leaving and they're going somewhere, and they're not staying in our neighborhoods. And I think that's what we need to do, is figure out how to plug up these holes and recycle that dollar and create that benefit, both economic and social, for our communities. And I appreciate everything that you're doing.
Yeah, can I just respond real quick to that? Just as an example, I just want you to know that we're working with five missed jobs. I was the housing authority commissioner, we did this stuff over here. We're recruiting people every day because they're skilled people. The point that I want to put back to everybody to a certain extent is, understand, for eight years, the federal government didn't pass any transportation funds. For six years, the state of California basically took from the gas taxes and everything else. And as a result, in 2004, we lost 10% of our membership. I know everybody was talking, we are doing, my mother died of asthma, and she lived in San Pedro. We gotta deal with the air quality. But what I'm, sort of putting, trying to put it back on your foot to a certain extent, we need to get things started. It's not enough to have a committee or a review or this and that. I represent the guys who put the hammer on the nail, and we want to get things going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenda Sands.
By the way, I'm gonna give you guys some calendars of our, one of the events that held at Banning's Landing was our 100th anniversary. It occurred a few years ago, and I think it's important for you guys to sort of understand what we do.
Thanks, John.
Hello, my name is Glenda Sands. It's great to have you guys here. It's my first-ever council meeting.
Oh, congratulations.
I don't want to be a bubble burster. I am so glad, though, for this project in Wilmington, but nobody has failed or bothered to mention the six-lane highway that is gonna back up this buffer zone. Nobody has mentioned the port's plan to move the rails to the tray pack area so that they connect all those trains. So even though our buffer zone is a wonderful, it's a great project, I think that they need to worry more about the six-lane truck highway that they're gonna turn hairy bridges into. Nobody has mentioned this project yet, but behind our buffer zone is going to be more diesel death zone. I think the Clean Air Action Plan that the port come up with is a good plan. I preferred Jim Hahn's no-nat increase. I have been two days at the Goods Movement in Long Beach right now, and the amount of freight and things that they are planning for the next few years, as wonderful as this project is, we won't be able to breathe the air because even the trucks that are short distance are not, I think, need more restriction. Long-distance trucks will have a higher restriction than short distance, and it's short distance that's going to be doing the polluting in Wilmington. I think that you need to fight to make all the trucks more cleaner. Moving the rail line to Wilmington, out of the San Pedro area over here, is not only going to bring the pollution, it's also going to bring the noise. Because no matter what happens, you can hear trains linking. It's just something that you're going to hear. Luckily in Wilmington, we don't have any linking right here. We have it in the other parts of Wilmington now. So, and we have enough. We don't need more trains over here to be linked together. Keep it in Pedro. Do what they need to do in that section over there. One of my ideas is, if, for this buffer zone, which I do, it's a great project, we need it. We have been so neglected. What about tunneling it? Couldn't the port tunnel the pollution that these trucks are gonna make on this six-lane highway? There are things that they can do to clean the air as the trucks go through. And I'd like to see you guys maybe help us on that. Because it's great. I do, I love the project. I think it's great for us. I worry about the amount of pollution that's gonna come because of six lanes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. And you know, that's a voice that you don't need to be ashamed of bringing forward at this time. I think that is what we all constantly deal with, is we've got to figure out a way to clean this air, because you're absolutely right. The growth, colleagues at the port, is projected to triple by 2020. Triple. We will be having more trucks, more trains, more containers coming through here. And while we are working very hard to provide a recreational opportunity for Wilmington, we've got to still worry about security, port security, and we've got to worry about clean air. And it is my wish, and colleagues, I know you support me in this, that someday, every one of these diesel trucks that does business at this port should be required to be retrofitted, alternative fuel should be used. It's a different scenario here, and I think we can't move forward with approving that kind of a growth without making sure that the air we breathe is not dangerous. We, many people in this audience know someone who's passed away prematurely. And as we know, last year, it's like 2,400 premature deaths that were related to cargo pollution. We are in a room right now, colleagues, that was dedicated to Gertrude Schwab, who was the all-time Wilmington community activist, who many of us believe died way too early and will never know whether or not it was a result of living in Wilmington her whole life and having to breathe this air. So don't be ever ashamed of bursting anybody's bubble. This is a great project. We're gonna support it, but at the same time, we're all gonna be committed to cleaning up this air. Because we can have both. We can have the economic engine and we can have clean air. The technology exists today. We just have to have the political will to do it.
Thank you. Just to give a little history.
Oh, your time's up.
I was gonna say, my great-great-grandmother bought her land from Mr. Peck in San Pedro. So my family has been here for many generations.
So you have a right to have that voice.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And I just wanted to add my congratulations on two things. One is, your always willingness to include the entire community and to have debate and discussion on something. This is a woman who's very transparent in what she does and inclusive in what she does. So I wanted to add my congratulations to that, because when we come down to Wilmington and when we've been in San Pedro, I'll never make that mistake again. What we have heard from everyone we have spoken to is about the fact that this is a very involved community that speaks their mind and makes sure that we all hear it. And I think that's why we have today, you've seen so many of us intently listening to your remarks. I want to mention what Janice was just talking to you and about the last speaker, which was the ability for us to impact on environment. And I chair the Transportation Committee, and Janice and I have had numerous conversations about the importance of recognizing that transportation of goods movement is very important to the city, but it also is about the residents of this neighborhood. And when I, I serve on a national committee for the National League of Cities on Transportation, and we've talked about, we've actually had presentations about Alameda Corridor and Alameda Corridor East and about the environmental issues. And to tell people across the country that they should care what happens here in San Pedro and Long Beach in the city of Los Angeles, that the ports, as Janice always reminds us, I think it's about 46% of the goods movement for the entire country comes through these two ports combined, and 80% for the entire state of California. And that, you know, if they could not get their wares and their services, their products in, whether it be Wisconsin or Iowa, wherever it may be, that's because it's something that's happening here at the port and that we need their support, that it is a federal issue. Last week, we had the Secretary of Transportation, and in fact, she was here yesterday as well, with a commission last week talking about the role of the federal government in transportation issues in the country. And in some ways, they were trying to say it's really a local issue. And we said, "No," because what happens here, and we gave the example of this community, that what happens here does impact the rest of the country, and that we should receive the dollars necessary to support clean energy, clean air issues here in the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles. And so I just wanted you to know that we're working very closely with your extraordinary councilwoman and that she has worked hard to make these projects a reality. So just wanted to add that. Congratulations, Janice.
Hi, and I'm President.
So I think, this is, yes, Mr. Blunt?
I just wanted to ask a technical question there. I know, Janice, you've talked to me and taught me about the on-dock rail and stuff, and you mentioned 46, 47%. Of the 47%, how much goes on rail? How much goes on truck? And how much of that truck do we know goes within the Southern California region?
I think about 40% goes on rail right now. 60% goes on truck. And I think of that 60%, almost 50%, I think, is local.
LA basin, LA basin. And I just want to tell the people of Wilmington, growing up in Silver Lake, I lived near the LA River, Los Angeles River, and when I was a little, little child, I'd hear the trains. I really thought they were the ships coming up because of that docks, you know, and the old children's books about, you know, John, and the pile driver story of that, that John Henry and all that, okay.
Janice, you have some.
Conversation, I don't know how many folks from Wilmington venture out to the Western San Fernando Valley. Probably not too often. And people in the Western San Fernando Valley don't venture out here too often, but I was just reflecting, we've got a billion-dollar project going on in my district right now at the Westfield. Major expansion, a billion dollars. The jobs that are being created, the economy that's gonna surge in, what Mr. Rosenthal's doing over at the airport, what he's doing on the west side, what Janice is doing down here. And so many people, the 4 million people we have in Los Angeles, live in their little neighborhoods, their little villages, and they don't venture out to the other parts of this region. And there's so much to see, and I just wanted to acknowledge, like Jan Perry, what she's doing in downtown Los Angeles with the projects that are taking place. And when we discuss this in council, we'll discuss it on a Tuesday, a Wednesday, a Friday, and then the series goes on and we discuss other issues. But when you sit here and reflect on so much progress that we've seen take place, but you see it, the capsule down here in Wilmington, and you're not really seeing the big focus of what we're doing in the entire city of Los Angeles. And if you watch television at all, the mayor's on every single day, doing something in the city of Los Angeles. Well, each council member here is doing the same thing within their respective districts, but I reflect on all the activities that are taking place citywide with every single council district. It's phenomenal. Councilmember Parks trying to bring an NFL team back and doing the renovation in the area.
He's going to the SC.
Yeah. So I just want to comment that while you see in your little village, your little neighborhood, what's happening, you multiply that 15 times, and the projects that are taking place, the jobs that are taking place. Also, I just want to mention, I went on a trip to Asia with the mayor, and when you look at the pollution that's taken place in China, where you can't breathe the air, the water is so polluted. I was looking at the ocean out here just a few minutes ago and how clean it is. People say this is polluted. This is not polluted at all compared to what you see in other countries. And in China in particular, you can't breathe the air. They're only concerned about one issue, but they're not concerned about the environment. Now they're waking up to say, "We need something with the environment." At least we have a balance to try and put it together, and that's what it's about, maintaining those jobs. And if we don't have this port accept that cargo, it's gonna go to Mexico or other ports that are trying to get that business. And then those jobs are gone, just like the manufacturing jobs. We used to have a GM plant in Van Nuys, it's gone. We had a Ford plant in Peak River, it's gone. Manufacturing's overseas. So we've gotta have this delicate balance. But the folks that this city need to understand, at least we're in tune to what needs to be done. And then when you got that beautiful Sunday, you have nothing to do, go up to Griffith Park and see Tom LaBonde up there talking to the tourists. Thank you.
But I will say, I will say one more on the record. I don't think we need to worry about the growth at this port. Again, conservative projections are that this will triple in growth. What we need to worry about is the quality of air, and that's what we have to worry about. And I think just what you saw in Asia, we now have more commitment from our international shipping partners to have an international memorandum of understanding in terms of the alternative fuel that even ships will begin using. Ships contribute 20% of all the air pollution in the Los Angeles basin. So I think we're gonna have more partners on the world stage that will agree that environment is important, and you don't need to sacrifice business for clean air. You can have both.
Thank you very much. So I think this is a note and file.
Actually, no action is required.
No action is required. Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation. I know we do have an amending motion on item number five. Mr. Parks, you want to...
Madam President, we have an amending motion that's circulated, and it primarily clarifies that under the new Prop 40 rules, they require that multiple applications be submitted with a priority list. And in this city, the council would normally do that. What we're proposing is that, as these are presented by Prop 40 Committee, that we send a message to Sacramento that all five projects are of equal priority, and so that we do not have to sit down and try to figure out which one is more important to the city of LA. So that would be the written motion. The verbal motion is that, in particularly dealing with the Attachment III on the resolution, and there's specific wording next to the Vision Theater in the 8th District that they use to term Phase I, and we want that struck because that is not an appropriate definition. And it's in two places on the resolution and throughout the Prop 40 report. So wherever Phase I is connected with the Vision Theater, that should be struck.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Seeing no other questions on this item, Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Cardinatus Grulhan, Weezer LaBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, sign.
10 ayes. That item's been approved. Next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements, colleagues?
I have.
Yes. Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. LaBange, and then Mr. Parks.
As I mentioned, that this room we're in right now is named after Gertrude Schwab, the longtime community activist of Wilmington. I've been asked to make the announcement that the Friends of Banning's Landing voted unanimously this week to name the lobby of this building after a longtime community activist, George De La Torre. So we'll be having that dedication at a later time. It's, well, he's a wonderful community member who's given back so much, and it's a very deserved honor. And colleagues, the LA Fire Department Fire Boat is hanging out right now in the water, right outside of Banning's Landing, and they will be doing their water display as we all exit the building. So make sure you look out there in the water and see that great spray. And colleagues, if you want to take a different route home, instead of going down Anaheim, go down Harry Bridges. Go up Avalon, turn left on Harry Bridges, and you'll drive right by what we've been talking about all morning, where this Wilmington buffer waterfront project is being built. And then you can get the freeway, the 110 freeway, right where the new police station, the Harbor Police Station, is being built. So just follow Harry Bridges Boulevard all the way around, and you can catch the freeway down at the other end. It would be a great opportunity for you to see what we've been talking about today.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. LaBange?
Yeah, thank you very much. And Ms. Hahn, thank you and all involved. This weekend, on Saturday, March 3rd, we're kicking off America the Beautiful again. And I'm proud to say, Iron Eyes Cody, God rest his spirit and soul and heaven, his son, Robert Cody. Iron Eyes, you may remember, that great Native American who took that famous picture that had all got us focusing on litter. His son is here to help kick off again the America the Beautiful Movement, which our mayor, Mayor Antonio Villarreal, will lead us in, and also call it on all neighborhoods, Wilmington the Beautiful, Silver Lake the Beautiful, Venice the Beautiful, West Valley the Beautiful, et cetera, throughout. So we each celebrate our neighborhoods and keep our cities and our state and our country clean. This is available on the city's website as well, but call your local council office for details to join in on this celebration, America the Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Just two announcements. Just to remind the public that Sunday, March 4th, is the annual marathon running through the city of LA. And it's the first time we'll be using a point-to-point start and finish, starting at Universal Studios in Indian and Downtown. Then also on Saturday, March 3rd, at 11:30, the mayor, along with residents of the 8th District and myself, will dedicate a new gymnasium at the Van Nuys Recreation Center, 5722 Second Avenue, and will be honoring the memory of Johnny L. Cochran by naming that gymnasium in his honor.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Want to invite everyone to our last Alley River meeting to review the draft master plan. We had our meeting last night at Canoga Park, last Saturday in Boil High. So tonight, at the Metro Water District, in the meeting room across from Alvera Street on Alameda, we invite you, this is an opportunity to come and look at the plan, give your input, and define your opportunities and your constraints, and hopefully get this project off the ground. So thank you so much for your cooperation. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And I would like to make an announcement that this is the first Friday of the month, so we will be meeting in Van Nuys City Hall, Ms. Hahn, so you get to drive the other way. Van Nuys City Hall. As you know, we meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays in City Council, and the first Friday is in Van Nuys City Hall. So we encourage everyone who is watching, or those of you here from Wilmington, to come out and visit us in Van Nuys. We have adjourned... Yes?
On the first Friday of the month, remind everybody to check their emergency preparedness. Dr. Lucy Jones from the United States Geological Survey predicted that it's 150 years since San Andreas had an incident, and they said, and this is what she said, "Shift happens." And there's going to be a shift in California, a shift in California, so be prepared. First Friday of the month, our Department of Emergency Preparedness, headed by Ellis Stanley, will be helpful. Check your local supplies in your own home and your smoke detectors always. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaBange. Should we have adjourned motions?
Yes.
We do. If I could ask everyone to please rise?
Thank you, members. I would like us to adjourn our meeting today in memory of Michelle McCrany, who passed away February 23rd at the age of 38 after a battle with lupus. I worked with Michelle in Watts. Many of the members of my council office worked with her. You might have remembered my story several years ago, when I came across 39 supposedly homeowners in the Franklin Square area of Watts, who all got their, won their homes through a lottery when Tom Bradley was mayor, and were promised their deeds that they would pay their rent for 20 years and a day. And the 20 years had come and gone, and they still did not have their deeds. And I worked with our housing department, I worked with CRA, and it was quite a complicated process. But at the end of the day, 39 people had their deeds to their homes, plus they were all remodeled and renovated, so that when they got the deeds, they would have beautiful homes. Michelle's mom, Mrs. Banks, was one of those who became a homeowner as a result of that. So we worked with Michelle through the whole process. She was a tireless fighter for not just getting people their deeds, but making sure that when they got that deed, it represented a home that was really something to be proud of. So we will miss her so much. And she's survived by her mother, Rosie Banks, two sisters, Ruth and Katrina, and her brother, Robert. The viewing is scheduled for Friday, March 2nd, after 4:00 PM at Angela's Funeral Home on Crenshaw Boulevard. The funeral is scheduled for Saturday at 1:00 PM. I will always remember Michelle as just a real tireless fighter for equality and justice for the Watts residents.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting is now adjourned.
LA City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.
... If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Councils toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Councils toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. You're watching Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events, brought to you by LA City View Channel 35 and the Department of Neighborhood and Community, airing Monday through Friday at 8:00 AM, 12:30 PM, 5:30 PM, and 11:00 PM. Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events provides the latest information about meetings and events sponsored by all neighborhood councils throughout Los Angeles. Information listed on this service may be subject to change without prior notice, so please call the contact phone number listed for the meeting to confirm the event. This listing covers an advanced two-week period. If you need additional information or require a meeting schedule for dates not listed on this segment, please log onto the city's website at www.lacity.org and click on City Events Calendar. If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Councils toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Councils toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. You're watching Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events, brought to you by LA City View Channel 35 and the Department of Neighborhood and Community, airing Monday through Friday at 8:00 AM, 12:30 PM, 5:30 PM, and 11:00 PM. Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events provides the latest information about meetings and events sponsored by all neighborhood councils throughout Los Angeles. Information listed on this service may be subject to change without prior notice, so please call the contact phone number listed for the meeting to confirm the event. If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Councils toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. You're watching Adopt a Friend for Life, presented by City of Los Angeles, LA City View 35, and Animal Service Department. Adopting an animal is a wonderful way to add a new family member to your home. When thinking about adopting an animal, please remember to plan ahead and consider your lifestyle. It's important to consider your lifestyle to make sure you, your family, and your new pet are happy. Here are some questions to ask. How large an animal is right for your home? Do you have a yard for a large dog or a patio for a smaller animal? How active an animal do you want? Do you want an active dog or a sedentary cat? How much time do you have to care for an animal? Do you want an animal with short hair or one with longer hair? How often do you go out of town? Who will care for the animal while you're away? Do you have small children or older ones who will be involved in the care of your animal? Remember, responsible pet ownership means you will have the time to care for and socialize with your animal. It means that you're willing to make the commitment to care for your new family member. Adopting a dog means a commitment anywhere from 10 to 16 years. Adopting a cat means a commitment anywhere from 15 to 20 years. If you see an animal you'd like to adopt, please write down the animal's impound number and immediately call the number on your screen to make sure the animal is still available. Remember, the sooner you call and go to your animal shelter, the greater the chance you'll be able to adopt that animal. Adoption fees vary. All adoption fees include vaccinations, physical examination, spaying or neutering, and license registration. Your animal will also receive its first medical examination free when you bring it to a member of the Southern California Veterinary Association. Simply bring in your animal within three days from the date of adoption and present your adoption receipt. All dogs and cats eight weeks or older must be surgically sterilized before you can take them home. Spaying or neutering ensures your pet will live a longer and healthier life and will not be a safety and financial burden to your community. If your adopted animal is already sterilized, you may immediately take the animal home after completing the adoption process. If your adopted animal is not sterilized, LA Animal Services will transport your pet to a private veterinarian for a physical examination and sterilization. The veterinarian will contact you prior to surgery to discuss any medical concerns, additional related fees, and other options. Once spayed or neutered, you must go to the veterinary clinic to pick up your pet. We hope you find an animal compatible with your lifestyle. Enrich your life with an animal from a city shelter, and you'll know you also saved a You're watching Adopt a Friend for Life, presented by City of Los Angeles, LA City View 35, and Animal Service Department. Adopting an animal is a wonderful way to add a new family member to your home. When thinking about adopting an animal, please remember to plan ahead and consider your lifestyle. It's important to consider your lifestyle to make sure you, your family, and your new pet are happy. Here are some questions to ask. How large an animal is right for your home? Do you have a yard for a large dog or a patio for a smaller animal? How active an animal do you want? Do you want an active dog or a sedentary cat? How much time do you have to care for an animal? Do you want an animal with short hair or one with longer hair? How often do you go out of town? Who will care for the animal while you're away? Do you have small children or older ones who will be involved in the care of your animal? Remember, responsible pet ownership means you will have the time to care for and socialize with your animal. It means that you're willing to make the commitment to care for your new family member. Adopting a dog means a commitment anywhere from 10 to 16 years. Adopting a cat means a commitment anywhere from 15 to 20 years. If you see an animal you'd like to adopt, please write down the animal's impound number and immediately call the number on your screen. It's time you consider the city of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the city of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The city of Los Angeles is an equal-opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you consider the city of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the city of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The city of Los Angeles is an equal-opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you consider the city of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the city of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The city of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you consider the city of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the city of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The city of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you consider the city of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the city of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The city of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you consider the city of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the city of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The city of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department You're watching Crime Watch, brought to you by the City of Los Angeles Police Department and LA City View 35. The city of Los Angeles is offering the following rewards for information leading to the identity, arrest, and prosecution of the person or persons responsible for committing the crime. The deadline for each reward is seen on your screen, accompanied by the phone number and the detective handling the case. Basic information about the victim and the crime, such as date and place--